I'd like to call us back to order. The time is 1:05 PM. Clark, could you please go ahead and do a roll call, please? Congressman Big Horse?
Present.
Congresswoman Good Fox? Second Speaker Hamilton? Congressman Keen?
Present.
Congresswoman Lemon?
Present.
Congressman Maker?
Here.
Congressman Potts?
Congresswoman Redcorn?
Here.
Congresswoman Rebar?
Here.
Congressman Tillman?
Here.
Congresswoman Whitehorn?
Here.
Assistant Chief Walker? Speaker Shaw? Present, we do have a call. Thank you. We are now on reports of select committees.
Thank you, Speaker, and colleagues. The Appropriations Committee met today to discuss ONCA 2510, which is an act to amend ONCA 2473 to provide supplemental appropriations, appropriation repeals, and appropriation modifications to the executive branch in the amount of $2,61,601, and to establish an alternate effective date. I am the sponsor. The final committee action was due pass with amendments, voting yes, Big Horse, Hamilton, Redcorn, Rebar, Shaw, and Whitehorn. Thank you, Speaker.
Thank you, Congressman Big Horse.
Okay, everybody get comfortable. Congressman met earlier today. ONCA 2509, an act to amend ONCA 2159 to reduce the appropriation of American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA funds to the executive branch for water and sewer repairs and improvements to the Hominy Indian Village and the Hominy community in the amount of $2,389,577 and establish an alternate effective date. The sponsor is Congresswoman Lemon. The final committee action was due passes properly engrossed with two yes votes from Big Horse and Keen. Next up was ONCA 2515, an act to amend ONCA 2151 to increase the appropriation of American ARPA funds to the executive branch for Hominy senior housing in the amount of $3,625,627 and establish an alternate effective date. The sponsor was Congressman Big Horse. Final committee action was due passes properly engrossed with two yes votes from Big Horse and Keen. Next up was Bill Number ONCA 2516, an act to amend ONCA 2161 to reduce the appropriation to the executive branch and ARPA funds for the continuation and completion of Corona virus aid relief and economic cares act projects by the amount of $25,432 and establish an alternate effective date. The sponsor was Congressman Big Horse. Final committee action was due passes properly engrossed with two yes votes from Big Horse and Keen. Next up is Bill Number ONCA 2517, an act to amend ONCA 2156 to increase the appropriation of ARPA funds to the executive branch for repairs and improvements to the Grayhorse World Water District in the amount of $777,286 and establish an alternate effective date. The sponsor was Congressman Big Horse. Final committee action was due passes properly engrossed with two yes votes from Big Horse and Keen. Next up is Bill Number ONCA 2518, an act to amend ONCA 2180 to reduce the appropriation to the executive branch and ARPA funds for replacement and upgrades to the nation's heating, ventilation, and air condition, HVAC systems in the amount of $190,003 and establish an alternate effective date. The sponsor is Congressman Big Horse. Final committee action is due passes properly engrossed with two yes votes from Big Horse and Keen. Next up is ONCA 2519, an act to amend ONCA 22109 to reduce the appropriation of ARPA funds to the Osage Nation Butcher House meets for flooring improvements in the amount of $12,020 and establish an alternate effective date. The sponsor is Congressman Big Horse. Final committee action is due passes properly engrossed with two yes votes from Big Horse and Keen. Next up is ONCA 2520, an act to amend ONCA 2262 to increase the appropriation of ARPA funds to the executive branch for burial assistance program in the amount of $1 million and establish an alternate effective date. The final committee action was due passes properly engrossed with two yes votes from Big Horse and Keen. Next up is ONCA 25-24, an act to amend ONCA 2215 to reduce the appropriation of ARPA funds to the executive branch for the cares continuation projects for the museum, language, and culture departments in the amount of $269,280 and establish an alternate effective, $208 dollars and establish an alternate effective date. The sponsor is Congresswoman Lemon. Final committee action is due passes properly engrossed with two yes votes from Big Horse and Keen. Next up is Bill Number ONCA 25-25, an act to amend ONCA 2281 to reduce the appropriation of ARPA funds for the expansion of the chapel in the Grayhorse Indian Village in the amount of $454,362 and establish an alternate effective date. The sponsor is Congresswoman Lemon. Final committee action is due passes properly engrossed with two yes votes from Big Horse and Keen. Next up is Bill Number ONCA 2526, an act to amend ONCA 2175 to increase the appropriation of ARPA funds to the executive branch for the expansion of broadband coverage throughout the Osage Nation in the amount of $221,578 and establish an alternate effective date. The sponsor is Congresswoman Lemon. Final committee action is due passes properly engrossed with two yes votes from Big Horse and Keen. Next up is Resolution Number ONCR 25-01. It's a resolution to revise and approve the fiscal year 2025 annual revenue projection of the Osage Nation. The sponsor is Congresswoman Rebar. Final committee action is due passes properly engrossed with two yes votes from Big Horse and Keen. Those are all at this time. Thank you, Speaker.
Thank you, Congressman Keen. Hold on just a second. Thank you. I apologize for the delay there. Again, there are several pieces of legislation. I want to make sure that we're moving everything in the right direction. With that objection, ONCR 2510 will be placed on general order day two on today's agenda. ONCA, correct. Thank you. I apologize. Let me restate that. ONCA 2510. We are now on general order day two where amendments may be proposed. ONCA 2521, an act to define poor space and to clearly establish that it is legally a part of the mineral estate or interest and to establish an alternate effective date. Congresswoman Whitehorn is the sponsor. Are there any amendments to be proposed?
Madam Speaker, I do have amendments. Page one, strike lines 23 through 27, and insert the following. The purpose of this act is to clearly state in Osage law that poor space is attached to and part of the mineral, Osage mineral estate or interest and not severable from the Osage mineral estate or interest. The Congress of the Osage Nation adopts this act in furtherance of its perpetual obligation to ensure and preserve, to ensure the preservation of the Osage mineral estate pursuant to Article 15, Section 4 of the Osage Nation Constitution. Page two, strike lines 67 through 70, and insert the following. G, the Osage Nation Congress finds that it is in the best interest of the Osage mineral estate to confirm in law that subsurface poor space is and always has been an integral part of the Osage mineral estate and is not and never has been part of the surface estate. Page two, strike lines 76 and 77, and insert the following. Poor space means a cavity, void, or interstitial space, whether natural or artificially created, in a subsurface sedimentary or other stratum. Page two, lines 81 through 89, insert, strike lines 81 through 89, and insert the following. A, poor space in all strata underlying the surface of the lands and waters within the Osage reservation is and always has been an integral part of the Osage minerals estate. B, title to poor space cannot be and has not been severed from title to the Osage mineral estate. Any instrument or arrangement that purports to sever title to poor space from title to the Osage mineral estate is void, provided that the leasing of the poor space under the authority of the Osage Minerals Council is not a severance prohibited by this act.
ONCA 2521 will advance to general order day three on today's agenda. Will advance to general order day three on today's agenda. Next, ONCA 2511, an act to amend ONCA 2475 to provide supplemental appropriations to the executive branch in the amount of $11,667,708 of nontribal funds and to establish an alternate effective date. The sponsor is Congresswoman Rebar. Are there any amendments to be made? Congressman Hamilton?
Yes, I'm making amendment. Page eight, line 362. Insert the following new section. Section 20A, Marathon Petroleum Grant Outdoor Health Complex. The Osage Nation Congress authorized and appropriate a sum of $100,000 to the Marathon Petroleum Grant Outdoor Health Complex from the General Fund and the Treasury, and is authorized to be spent according to table below.
ONCR 25, or I'm sorry, ONCA 2511 will advance to general order day three on today's agenda. ONCA 2513, an act to repeal ONCA 2153 and return $3 million of American Rescue Plan Act funds to the General Fund originally appropriated for water and sewer infrastructure repairs in the Pahuska Indian Village and to establish an alternate effective date. The sponsor is Congressman Big Horse. Are there any amendments to be proposed?
Speaker, point of order.
Yes.
I don't know that we've actually moved 2513, 2523, 2527, and 25O, ONCR 2502
Okay. Thank you, Congresswoman Whitehorn. On ONCA 2513, 2527, 2523, and ONCR 2502. Does anyone have any amendments that they plan on making for those four pieces of legislation? Okay. With that objection, I'm moving ONCA 2513, ONCA 2523, ONCA 2527, and ONCR 2502 We're now on general order day three where amendments may be voted on The amendment for ONCA 2521, page one, strike lines 23 through 27, and insert the following. The purpose of this act is to clearly state in Osage law that poor space is attached to and a part of the Osage mineral estate or interest and not severable from the Osage mineral estate or interest. The Congress of the Osage Nation adopts this act in furtherance of its perpetual obligation to ensure the preservation of the Osage mineral estate pursuant to Article 15, Section 4 of the Osage Nation Constitution. Next, page two, strike lines 67 through 70, and insert the following. G, the Osage Nation Congress finds that it is in the best interest of the Osage mineral estate to confirm in law that subsurface poor space is and always has been an integral part of the Osage mineral state and is not and never has been a part of the surface estate. Next, page two, strike lines 76 and 77, and insert the following. Poor space means a cavity, void, or inter-
Interstitial.
-interstitial space, whether natural or artificially created in a subsurface sedimentary or other stratum. Finally, page two, strike lines 81 through 89, and insert the following. Poor space in all strata underlying the surface of lands and waters within the Osage reservation is and always has been an integral part of the Osage mineral state. B, title to poor space cannot be and has not been severed from title to the Osage mineral state. Any instrument or arrangement that purports to sever title to poor space from title to the Osage mineral state is void, provided that the leasing of poor space under the authority of the Osage Minerals Council is not a severance prohibited by this act. Yes, Congresswoman Whitehorn.
May I have some discussion, please, on that?
Yes, Congresswoman Whitehorn.
Thank you. Bear with me, colleagues, because I know I've talked to all of you about it, but just for the record of anybody that may be listening, this has been a collaboration, piece of legislation, it's a collaboration between the Minerals Council, which requested it, Congress, and the executive branch. The Attorney General and one of, an attorney that the executive uses, they weighed in on some of the language. We were getting ready to vote on the bill, and they submitted some submission, they submitted some, their response to it and their ideas on it. And I thought that the language that they suggested had more strength. It did not substantially change anything that the bill did. So there's no real substantial change in it. But I just wanted to say for the record, I agree with this, and I hope that my colleagues will vote yes for it. Thank you.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of the amendment, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, please say no. Amendment passes. We are now on. ONCA 2521 will advance to third reading after engrossment of today's agenda. We're still on general order day three. We're now on ONCA 2511. The amendment is on page eight, line 362, and insert the following new section. Section 28, Marathon Petroleum Grant Outdoor Health Complex. The Osage Nation authorized and appropriates a sum of $100,000 to the Marathon Petroleum Grant Outdoor Health Complex from the General Fund and the Treasury, and is authorized to be spent according to the table below. And there is a table attached, which was included in the documentation that each of you received. Any discussion? Congressman Hamilton?
Yes, it's my understanding this $100,000 is from Marathon Grant, from Marathon Oil. It's from a grant, it's nontribal dollars, and it's going to be used for the health complex. So that's the information I have. I did send out support documentation today, or the clerks did. And if there's any other questions, I'll try to answer them. If not, I urge you to vote yes.
Congresswoman Rebar?
Yes, thank you, Speaker. And to you, Congressman Hamilton, do you know why we're addressing it now rather than why it wasn't sent down with the support docs by the deadline when we started special session?
That's my fault. I didn't request the support docs until today. At the time when special session was being scheduled, I seen all the, I thought we were just going to focus on ARPA dollars, and there were so many pieces of legislation. So that's my fault on the delay of that.
If I may?
Yes, go ahead.
So with the other requests that have been through, including the museum that we just spoke about, was this request also funneled through Treasury in the normal process before it came here?
Treasurer Batson and his assistant Rebecca were CC'd on the emails that were, that were directed towards me, so they are aware of it.
Okay. If I may? Yes, Congresswoman Rebar, go ahead.
So the request then is coming, it came directly to you as a congressperson, not through, or did Treasury send down the support docs?
Support docs came from Secretary Johnson's office. As I understand, they would be overseeing the project and have been overseeing it.
Congresswoman Whitehorn?
So my, any colleague, if it's okay that I ask my colleagues a question during this time, any colleague that has been here when all of the, this was the sports complex or whatever you, health complex was being worked out, has this Marathon Oil grant for this amount of money been presented to this body previously and rejected? I'm just curious.
Congresswoman Rebar?
So if I'm not mistaken, and this is why I like this stuff to go through committee, because we can't ask somebody from the executive branch, but to my recollection, we have authorized spending twice now from Marathon, one to DNR, I believe, and one to education. And this is a third one, I believe, for the sports complex, if I'm not mistaken.
Congresswoman Whitehorn? And then Congresswoman Lemon?
I think donations are wonderful, but it's just, I think it's something that I would have preferred to discuss in committee, just so I'd have a better playing field view of Marathon Oil's philanthropy toward the Osage Nation. I think it'd be interesting to have those conversations in committee. I don't know how I'm going to vote on this amendment right now.
Congresswoman Lemon?
I had a question. If the discussion that we were having was actually germane to the actual amendment, but I went on without it, so, because we're talking. We all know that there has been a rub between this branch and executive concerning the health sports complex. This is my take on it. And Congressman Hamilton, if this doesn't get to pass today because of principle or wanting to discuss further in committee, I do hope that you will bring it back at another time because I am in support of it, because we have a facility now that we must maintain. Therefore, I necessarily do not have a problem with the donations, such as Congresswoman Whitehorn was saying. The donations are good. I understand that there might be some questions as to what their end goal is, Marathon, if there's something philanthropic that they're hoping in return. And you could have asked that question at that time. But I am going to support this amendment today because it is to support our current newly opened sports slash health complex. Thank you.
Congresswoman Rebar?
Yes, thank you. Back to your question. I think there was a Philip 66 Petroleum, maybe, donation that came down, and at that time, we did not authorize the spending of that. So I don't know what's happened to that donation. But I think, to answer your question, I think there was another donation. It wasn't from Marathon, though.
Congressman Keen?
Yeah, ideally, I think, I mean, we would have this in committee, but I don't think that should be an impediment to just- that should be an impediment to just, I mean, I think it's pretty self-explanatory what we're doing with this facility, with this grant. I mean, I don't, I don't think that should be, you know, something to make us vote no. It's basically what I'm trying to emphasize here. So I just wanted to say that much. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All those in favor of the amendment, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, no. The amendment passes. At this time, with that objection, ONCA 2521, ONCA 2511, and ONCA 2510 will be placed Okay. Looks like we're moving right along. With that objection, we will recess it this time for the purpose of engrossment. To the call of the chair. Speaker.